Good evening. I would like to welcome you to the City Council Meeting of the City of Lenore for Tuesday, December 3, 2019. We welcome you here. Thank you for being here with us a little earlier than normal. We have several things that are going on tonight, so we set it for our earlier meeting tonight. Thank you for your indulgence of that and being with us. As we normally do, we will open with a moment of silence, and we will remain standing for our Pledge of Allegiance. So please join us now as we rise for the moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. We salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We will now administer the OSA office, and I will ask the Honorable Judge Robert Brady, retired, to administer the oath first to the Mayor of the City.
I apologize for my phone going off. When I looked at it, it was a notice that said, "Remember to swear in the mayor and city council." Come around over here.
Over the front, alright.
And I'll just ask you to repeat after me. Put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right. Your other left hand. I state your name.
I, Joseph L. Gibbons.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional power.
And authorities.
And authorities.
Which are or may be established.
Which are and may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor to support.
That I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution of said state.
Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
I state your name.
I, Joseph L. Gibbons.
Further swear.
Further swear.
That I will execute the duties.
That I will execute the duties.
Of the office of mayor.
Of the office of mayor.
For the City of Lenore.
For the City of Lenore.
To the best of my ability and judgment.
To the best of my ability and judgment.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Let me have the members of the council that are going to have the oath of office administered this evening. And if you'll bring someone around that will hold the Bible for you.
I don't have a mayoral.
Okay. Do we have more than one?
Can we all?
You got some underneath there.
Okay, here we go. Well, we got enough. Put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name. Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
Which are or may be established.
Which are or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor to support.
And I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
I state your name.
I, Todd Royce.
Further swear.
Further swear.
That I will execute the duties.
That I will execute the duties.
Of the office of council member.
Of the office of council member.
For the City of Lenore, North Carolina.
For the City of Lenore, North Carolina.
To the best of my ability and judgment.
To the best of my ability and judgment.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. There you go, Todd. Let's give that to Ben.
Gentlemen, congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations to you.
Thank you. We are honored to continue serving with you. I'm always proud of this council and what we are accomplishing, what we're trying to accomplish. Thank you for your hard work with that, continuing to be a part of it, and hopefully we'll see our city grow and prosper in 2020 as we move forward and beyond that. So we've been proud of everything we've done so far. So thank you. Thank you for the efforts.
Continue to grow.
Continue to grow. Yes, thank you, sir. Judge Brady, thank you for being with us tonight and performing those duties for us. We were honored to have you administer the oath of office. You're honored. Okay, we will move on then to the next item on our agenda is the election of our mayor pro tempore, which we call Mayor Pro Tem in short. And we will elect a council member to serve a two-year term as the mayor pro tem of the city. And I will now open that up for any discussion, motion, nomination, whatever you'd like to do concerning the mayor pro tem. Let me say this as we do that. This job does require that you do some extra things that the normal council members will do and don't do. And we do ask that the mayor pro tem presides over one of our meetings each month. The committee the whole, as we call it, one of our council meetings. They also have to preside and do things in absence of the mayor when the mayor cannot be at places. We ask you to attend all kinds of events, including groundbreakings, ribbon cuttings, business after hours, all kinds of city functions. And I'd like to commend you for all that you do. And I would like to ask you to continue to work toward being as much of that as you can. We certainly appreciate that. I think it's part of what we are as elected officials, that we need to be as in many things as we can to make this city the great city of Lenore even greater than it is. So by being a part of that, we would like to continue to do that. And please put that as part of our duties that we are elected to do, is to represent our city and our county in every possible way that we can as we move forward. So thank you for what you're doing. Please consider that in not only electing our mayor pro tem, but in being a part of what we do every day to make this a great city. So I appreciate that. I appreciate working with all of you and look forward to a great four years again and move forward. So with that said, I will open it up to any nominations for our mayor pro tem.
Mr. Mayor, I've been mayor pro tem for the past four years and to this board. I'm very grateful that you have given me the honor to do this. But at this time, I really feel like it's time for maybe somebody else to try this duty and to fill in when the mayor doesn't show up, which is never. Because you are an excellent mayor. I say there's three things that this man puts in his life, and it depends on the day as to the order. One is his family, two is the city of Lenore, and three is Appalachian State football. So again, it depends on the day as to what order those fall. But we are a great council. We have a great team. And I feel like anybody up here can sit and be mayor pro tem. And I think it's important that we bring different perspectives up here and in this position and in this role and represent, because everybody up here can do it and do it well. So I would like to nominate Chrissy Thomas as our next mayor pro tem. I think she will do a fantastic job. And I hope that each and every one of you will support her as I will. And I know you'll kick butt and do what it's supposed to do, everything the mayor just said. I know you can do it. And you're my nominee.
Okay, we have a nomination for council member Chrissy Thomas on the floor. Do we have any other nominations?
Motion that nominations be closed.
I have a motion from Councilmember Purdue that the nominations be closed. So Councilmember Chrissy Thomas on the floor. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Thomas, we welcome you and say congratulations to you. Thank you for wanting to be a part of that, taking on this extra added responsibility. And we look forward to working with you together to continue to make Lenore the best place in the world to live and every day. So thank you for that. We appreciate it. So it's all right. We won't switch anything right now. Eventually, we'll do some changes with that. We'll go ahead and conduct our meeting. And if there's anything you'd like to say, I'll let that be right now. You're welcome to.
Yes. First, I'd just like to say that it's only because I've had so many great examples for the time that I've been on the council that I feel that I could step into this place. And it's only because of the example that the previous mayor pro temps and all this council has been to me that I feel like I have the support and I've got the knowledge to this point to continue to represent the city. All that we've done, we will continue to do together. I appreciate the council and council member Willis having the confidence in me. We have a great team. I have a wonderful mayor, and I look forward to continue to serve and live up to the expectations that's been presented before me. So I appreciate the opportunity, and it is an absolute honor.
Thank you and congratulations. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on then to, we have a special recognition tonight. And I will recognize our fire chief, the Honorable Mr. Ken Hare. And we will recognize Corporal Joe Hammerick, the Lenore Police Department, and Deputy Paul Exon. Am I pronouncing that right? From the Caldwell County Sheriff's Office for their lifesaving efforts in a recent house fire.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, City Councilman, Mr. Hildebrand. Thank you for letting me recognize two law enforcement officers. If you don't mind, I would like to have Deputy Paul Exon, Corporal Joe Hammerick, to step up. And Sheriff Jones and Chief Phelps.
I would like to recognize Sheriff Allen Jones is with us. Thank you, Sheriff Jones, for being here. And of course, our own Chief Phelps. Glad to have you guys.
Again, let me tell you what an honor it is I have to recognize these two law enforcement officers for the act of heroism that they displayed at one of our structure fires early morning of November 15. What they did was truly above and beyond their call of duty and has impacted many lives, including the lives of our own firefighters, and we're grateful for it. The easiest thing for me to do is I've got them a plaque, and it kind of tells the story of why they're up here and what they have done. I'd like to first start with Deputy Paul Exon. This is presented to you in grateful appreciation and deserving recognition of your act of bravery and valor for the efforts you displayed on the morning of November 15, 2019. During the early morning hours of this date, Lenore Fire Department was responding to a structure fire located at 1116 Bradford Mountain Road in the city limits of Lenore. While the fire department was en route, you arrived on the scene and verified that the house where the Clark family resided was indeed on fire. Noticing that the occupants of the house were not to be found, you attempted to alert the Clark family of the fire and proceeded to enter their home. That was well involved in active fire, waking all family members and successfully getting them to safety outside and away from harm. Deputy Exon, your valiant efforts displayed on November 15, 2019 ensured the lives of the Clark family were saved and all could have the opportunity to rebuild their lives together as a family. And this is presented on behalf of Lenore Fire Department and the City of Lenore. Your efforts and actions will never be forgotten. Also, I'd like to recognize Corporal Joe Hammerick in grateful appreciation and deserving recognition of your act of bravery and valor on the morning of November 15, 2019. During the early morning hours of this date, Lenore Fire Department was responding to a structure fire located at 1116 Bradford Mountain Road in the city limits of Lenore. While the fire department was en route, you arrived on the scene of the fire and noticed heavy flames on the structure and a fellow law enforcement officer helping to get a family out of the house to safety. The family was concerned about their pets, and you entered the burning structure to try and retrieve the pets and get them to safety, in which you were able to save several of the family pets and get them out of the house to safety. Corporal Hammerick, your valiant efforts displayed on November 15, 2019 ensured the Clark family did not lose all of their family pets and could rebuild their lives together. On behalf of Lenore Fire Department and City of Lenore, your efforts and actions will never be forgotten. And I do want to say to Sheriff Jones and Chief Phelps, these two officers are displays of the kind of people you are employing at your departments, who are true public servants to our whole county and city. And we want to thank you for having the wit to employ these types of employees. Thank you.
You've got to turn side. All right, and we'll take two with the flash and two without, okay? One, two, three. One, two, three. One second. One, two, three. Excellent. Good. Thanks, Greg. You do what you can.
Make it work.
Is that 13?
Oh, well, he's got one behind and working his way up. But time is all over.
You're now official.
I know they just went out the door, but.
They were to get out of here.
They were. It's after hours. They gotta. But please pass on our congratulations. We're very honored, and we thank them for what they have done. That was above and beyond the call of duty. We know they put their lives on the line every day, but that's extra, putting their lives on the line. So we appreciate that and saving the animals, saving what they could with the house and the people that were involved. It's just, it's an honor. It's a tribute to what you guys do every day of your lives to make this place the safest place it can be to live. So thank you very much for that. All right, we'll move on then to, tonight we have several matters, one matter scheduled for a public hearing, and that is a rezoning request, 103 Virginia Street Southwest. This hearing will be held to consider rezoning 103 Virginia Street Southwest from R9, which is mixed density residential, to V6. That's transitional business, as submitted by Kathleen Kaminski, Unitarian Universalist of Caldwell County. The staff recommends approval of the request based on the following consistency statement, that being the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan because it facilitates straightforward zoning standards consistent with the adopted future land use map. The proposed amendment is reasonable and in the public interest because it will allow one development site in common ownership to follow the zoning requirements of a single zoning district and simplify development review for the site in the future. There is a note, the rezoning request was tabled at the November 12 council meeting in order for staff to provide proper mail notification to the surrounding property owners in accordance with state statutes. I will now open the public hearing, and I'll recognize our planning director, Ginny Weelock, for her comments.
All right. Good evening. You've got your staff report in the packet, and the applicant is in the audience if you have any questions. This came up during the overhaul that we did in the spring when we got rid of that weird B4 zoning district. We rezoned part of the property, but historically it had always been split zoned, and we hadn't noticed the way we needed to to go ahead and change this piece too. So this is kind of a map cleanup that we had been anticipating doing. No development proposed at this time, but I think that it makes sense. The proposal's going from R9 to B6, which is a residential district to a transitional business district that historically is assigned in areas where, you know, it might be appropriate for business, but it might be adjacent to residential. So happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions, council, to Ginny concerning this rezoning?
All right.
Questions, it looks like. Thank you. We are in the public hearings. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council concerning this rezoning request? Okay, seeing no one then, I will close the public hearing and turn it over to council for any discussion, recommendation, or motion.
Make a motion we approve.
A motion from council member Ben Willis to approve the rezoning request for 103 Virginia Street from R9 to B6 as presented. If no other discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you for being with us. Okay, we'll move on then to our consent agenda items. Tonight, it consists of one item on right now, which are minutes from our City Council Meeting of Tuesday, November 12, 2019, as presented. Item B, we will need to take off the agenda tonight with a motion and bring that forward at our first meeting in January, when we can have time to read over and review the closed session minutes as presented, which we have not had a chance to do at this point. So right now, first, I will ask for the approval of item A, the minutes. I have a motion from Councilmember Perkins to approve the minutes, item A, on the consent agenda item. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. And now we'll need a motion to move the second item, the closed session minutes, to the first meeting in January, which is January the 7, 2020.
Make a motion that we remove item B and put it on the January 7, 2020 agenda.
Okay, you heard the motion from Councilmember Purdue to move it to the January 7 meeting. No other discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much. That will be taken care of. It's now time on our agenda for any requests or petitions of any citizens. If there's anyone who would like to approach the council, that's the time to do so now. Seeing no one, we will then move on to, we do not have reports from our boards and commissions this evening, so we'll move on to the report and recommendations of the city manager, Mr. Hildebrand.
Mayor, council, a couple items for your information this evening. The annual Christmas parade we held this Friday, December 6, beginning at 6:30 in downtown. The annual luminary display is scheduled for Friday, December 13, from 6 to 10 p.m. at Blue Ridge Memorial Park. The fabulous film night is scheduled for Saturday, December 14, with the movie The Grinch. Is that one of you guys? A girl?
Joe.
That will be shown at the Lower High School Auditorium at 7 p.m. And Santa's scheduled to greet everyone from 6 to 7, so I encourage folks to attend that. The next city council meeting will be January 7, as the mayor mentioned earlier, at 6 p.m. The December 17 meeting is canceled due to the holidays. And city offices will be closed December 24, 25, 26 for Christmas observance, and then also Wednesday, January 1, observance of New Year's Day.
Quick question on meeting place for Friday 9. Is it where it usually is across the high school?
That's my understanding. Is that correct, Kenny?
It's the same route.
Same route.
Same route.
Okay.
Thank you.
I did golf carts, I think.
Tonight, you have two items for council action. The first is minimum housing ordinance for 114 Palmer Street in the order of abatement, directing staff to abate the minimum housing violations by demolishing or removing the structure. And I mentioned 114 Palmer Street. That's parcel ID 0932219. It's also NC PIN number 2759172776. And planning director Weelock, if you want to go back and update council on that request.
Thanks. We actually have two ordinances that are minimum housing abatement ordinances on the agenda tonight. As you know, we make every effort possible to save houses when we can, get them back into use. Our next best bet is to have the owners pay for the abatement because it's really their responsibility. So when you see these types of requests before you, you know that we pretty much exhausted everything else that we could before you see them. And these both come from a partnership between planning and police. We've been meeting quarterly to discuss nuisance properties and issues that we have with them. Both of these properties have a long list of calls for service. I think Chief Phelps can speak on that if you're interested. But tonight, we're asking for approval to allow for the city to come in and demolish the property of 114 Palmer Street. This is the first on the agenda. And this really, I think the housing inspector, Zach Clark, really should be commended on this because both of these, we thought we were already out of money, and he managed to get owner abatement on several other properties, which has brought us the ability to go ahead and address these issues. So we're no longer working off the minimum housing priority list because we've pretty much exhausted that list. These are we're dealing with as they come up and get reported to us through the police department.
114 Palmer, if you're going up, is that on the right or the left?
Some of the right.
On the right?
Right side, yeah.
Okay.
I'm happy to answer. Any questions?
Looks like the notifications were very exalted. And having worked with our city attorney for the last 16 years on how did we take care of this, take care of this, take care of this, I feel certain that you've reviewed this, and we should proceed.
Yeah. The owner of 114 Palmer is not always the easiest to reach. So he's kind of in and out. And so we definitely have made contact several times. He is completely aware of this and has vacated the structure, to my knowledge. My understanding is that he found a place to rent in Hudson and has a place to...
Good enough. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion before you for the minimum housing ordinance for 114 Palmer Street as recommended by city staff. If there's any other discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Thank you for that. Thank you all for being with us. Hope this will help the neighborhood. That's good to hear. All right, we will move on then to any report or recommendations of our city attorney, Mr. Rohr.
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. Good looking tie you got on, buddy.
Get your assignment finished.
My ordinance is up to date.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed, I forgot to let the city manager speak.
I was just going to wish everyone a happy and safe holiday season, but the mayor seems to be...
I hadn't got to that part yet.
But anyway, I do wish you a happy...
I also wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mr. Attorney.
Festivus as well. Thank you.
All right, now it's my turn, and we would just like to say the same thing. Merry Christmas to all and happy holidays. I hope everyone will have a wonderful holiday season. Be safe. Enjoy your family and friends and everything that you can during this special season, and be very careful. A lot of people out there don't want to let you enjoy this season, so please try to be as safe as we possibly can. I know our guys at the police department and fire department will be on extra duty and taking care of any situation they can, and our fine staff all over will be trying to take care of all the things. Thanks for cutting the tree down down Northwood Street today. It was great to see that cleaned up, and everybody was back in traffic moving, so we appreciate all the things you guys do all over our community. And I know our public utilities guys were out working on Harper Avenue today, so hopefully taking care of some situations there. So, trying to get ahead of all the things we can, any way we can. So, thank you, guys, for all you do. Kenny, thank you for lining up the parade and getting all those things going. We look forward to that on Friday. Hope everyone will be here. We've got to make a trip to Asheville and back to try to get on, back to the parade. We plan to do that for the essentials class that we have to go to after elections or whatever. So, it'll be a lot busy week this week. Anything for any of our council members before we go forward?
I just wanted to thank everybody for Turkey Tuesday. Chief Phelps, I appreciate you and all the staff that took a part in controlling traffic for that event. We ended up giving out 275 turkeys, a little different from years past, but I think that's still a great number. We still help people and created a blessing for someone during the holiday season, but we couldn't have done it, and I think we're still going to go back to the drawing board and figure out the best way. I love Chief Phelps' approach to see what, how it went this year, and we'll go back and we'll figure out how we can make it more effective next year. But, it's the partnerships that really made that thing flow. And it wasn't perfect, but we gave out some turkeys and hopefully blessed some people. My friend got the wrong end of it.
Reverend Perkins, councilmember, you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I agree. It was fun. After all the turkeys, we give it out.
We may need to bring the turkey suit back.
No, we'll leave it. We'll leave it in the barn.
Leave it there. Okay, anything else to come before this body tonight? If not, we stand adjourned.